Okay, it's past five o'clock, so we'll get started on our November the 4th Planning Board meeting. I guess we'll have a roll call, please.
Philip Humbard.
Here.
Neil Helm. Lisa Miller.
Here.
Lauren Shackelford.
Here.
Kiara Lurs.
Here.
Okay, approval of last month's minute, September 30th meeting. Anybody having comments or want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval as stated.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, approval of agenda, has agenda changed, Seda? Has not?
No, sir.
Okay. I guess we'll go to old business then. First item on the agenda, old business, is Sonora. Am I correct in saying that? Sonora Boat and RV Storage, pre LSD.
The Sonora Boat and RV Storage Proposal is located within the eastern portion of the county. This project was originally presented at the Planning Board on September 30th, and it was tabled. The subject parcel sits just north along East Highway 412. Conditional use permit for this proposal was approved at the June 10th, 2021 Planning Board Meeting and ratified by the Quorum Court on July 15th. The applicant is seeking preliminary approval to construct a storage facility that will be sized for approximately 118 boats and/or RVs. And the storage spaces will be a mixture of covered, enclosed, and open. At the last meeting, there were many questions about what exactly the applicant was trying to construct, and whether or not there would be utilities such as electricity underwater. So, I apologize, but I'm not going to go through the entire presentation. These are just the updates. So, the board members here tonight should have a paper update packet. Also, it's a folder on your desktop, or it should already be open on your desktop called Plans. There is an Item A, Sonora Boat and RV Storage, Pre LSD, that has this site plan on it and in digital form. So, you can zoom in and get a closer view if you'd like to. So, the site plan shows that the applicants will have wooden fencing around three sides of the property. The property that faces East Highway 412 where the entrance and the exits will be, will be fenced, but not opaquely fenced. Some of the questions were, what is it going to look like? So, the applicant is intending something like this for their entrance. It is an electric gated fence. The main entrance will either swing up or back into itself. This one swings up. And these are, so these are enclosed storage spaces. Again, the site plan details a mixture of open and enclosed. Here's another example. There are one, two, three, four, five, six in here, and one is open and the other are closed up. These are open stalls. The applicant is still working with the county engineer in regards to drainage. Should the board approve the preliminary large scale, the applicant will have to submit construction plans for review. So, it will get another go-through technically. Staff has reviewed the submitted documents and recommends the following conditions. These conditions have not changed since your staff report and since the last time this project was presented. The applicant is here, in case you have questions. Do you have any questions for staff?
Anybody have any questions of Seda at this moment? All right, we'll open it up to the, to the audience here, if they have anything to say, the applicant, or any applicant had anything to say?
I'm Sarah Gerst, I'm with the, with EDA, and we're here to answer any questions you may have. And the property owner is here as well.
All right, thank you. Anybody here have any questions of the owner?
Yeah, if you don't mind, sir, if you would, please come up and state your name for the record.
Jeremy Davison.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir, for, for providing the, the concept, the questions, I was here for the last meeting, the questions were, was it going to look like, that sort of thing. So, the pictures you provided helped. Couple of questions that we did have were about utilities. I assume there's going to be electrical, is there going to be any water brought to this site?
Each unit will have electricity, and there'll be a water hose connections throughout those, you know, facility.
Okay, and then as far as the mixture between the open air and the traditional, what I call traditional, what, how, what's the breakdown there? Is it where it shows asphalt, the open area, and then the boat storage buildings would be the more traditional closed?
So, the, wherever you drive through will be asphalt, and then anywhere you park a boat or RV will be concrete.
What's, do you know what the percentage of open air versus closed-in units will be?
Well, the two sides are going to be closed, is that correct?
The two sides, the back sides will be closed off, but the, the front sides will be completely open.
Okay.
And then on each end, they'll be closed off. And then the, the center, the center ones will be fully enclosed.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir, I appreciate it.
Yes, sir, yeah.
So, the people driving by really won't see them, anything but the building and possibly a small glimpse of the boats?
Yeah, on the sides, I do want to put a, not a wooden fence, but some type of either metal or like a brick fence wall.
Okay.
I want it to look nice.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have a question of the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you all.
Anybody from the audience want to make comment? All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board.
I move to approve the Sonora Boat and RV Storage, Pre LSD, subject to staff comment.
I'll second.
All right, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next item on the agenda is, has been tabled, so we'll go down to Item C, Koger Corner Food Truck Court, CUP.
The Kogers Corner Food Truck Court, CUP request is located within the northeastern portion of the county. The subject parcel is situated on the northwestern corner of East Highway 412 and Sonora Road, Washington County 93. There are two existing buildings on the property, neither of these buildings will be utilized for food truck courts. Access to the project area will be solely from Sonora Road. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the development and operation of a food truck court in an area that zones for residential and agricultural uses. The subject parcel is approximately 2.6 acres in size, however, only 0.9 acres will be utilized for the food truck court. There should be a copy of the site plan in an update packet, also on your desktop. Since the area to be disturbed is less than one acre, a large-scale development plan was not required. Close-up. So, the applicant states they will have spaces for approximately seven food trucks. There should be enough space to accommodate around 24 parking spaces for patrons. Appropriate ADA compliant parking and access will also be provided. There is an existing driveway, however, the applicant will install a new one. There is an existing septic system, but the applicant will be required to have the septic system assessed by a designated representative to ensure that it's compliant with the Health Department's rules and regs on projects similar to this. And due to the area that this, that this project resides in, access to utilities should not be an issue. So, the red star in the middle of the screen represents approximately where the food truck court will be. The location is surrounded by a mixture of commercial and agricultural uses. To the immediate west is a coffee shop, the TNT Espresso, and then beyond that is the Dollar General. Between the two buildings is another building that's utilized by the Nob Hill Fire Department. Across Highway 412 are the Sonora Elementary and Middle Schools and an antique store. Across Sonora Road to the east is a church, and just beyond that is a convenience store and a diner. Directly to the north are commercial poultry houses. This is kind of the site where the proposed food truck court will be. I do apologize for the Google images. We didn't have time to go out there and take pictures, but it looks like this. So, this is looking from the existing driveway towards Highway 412. And you can see kind of where that white moving truck is. That's approximately kind of the area. Here's looking at the existing driveway at the two houses that again are not a part of the food truck court. This is the church that's across the street. And notifications were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the subject parcel. To date, we have not received comments expressing favor or opposition of this project. Staff has reviewed the submitted documents and recommends the following conditions of approval. There is one change to the conditions since the time of your staff report, and that is highlighted here in red. It just states that any existing septic system, the tank, the lines, et cetera, must be inspected by a DR of the Arkansas Department of Health before final approval may be given. Any questions?
Quick question. It's kind of hard to tell from the plan, but is it, is an entrance or exit at all coming out on Highway 412? Is it only on Sonora Road?
It's only on Sonora Road.
Has there been consideration of fencing or secure, between the road and the food trucks?
At this time, there is no consideration. There was not a fence or anything on their site plan.
Okay.
I'm a little bit concerned, there's a, a light at that intersection, and there's quite heavy traffic on 412. Is this drive the ingress and egress to this food court? There's a lot of rock trucks out there, I know the men are going to want to stop and eat. I'm concerned about wrecks and access with vehicles to that area. Do you have any comments on that?
I don't have comments, but I do know that there is a little, the TNT Espresso, which was approved by the board maybe two, three years ago. That was also, their entrance and exit is directly off of Highway 412. We haven't had any calls or any complaints regarding issues about wrecks or anything at all. Honestly, it's been very silent.
But you did state ingress and egress would be off Sonora Road.
Sonora Road, yes.
At the light and not off of 412, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
How far back from the light down Sonora would that drive be?
I do not have an, a...
It's not right there on the corner?
No, no.
It's back?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Is the applicant, or anyone from the audience here to talk about it? Okay. First, does anybody have any questions of Seda before we go to the, okay. If you want, if you would, come up and state your name and your address.
My name's Lauren DeKoker, and I'm the one that's proposing the, the food truck court. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Do you feel the amount of parking that you got is adequate for?
I'm sorry?
The amount of, the amount of parking you have, is that going to be adequate?
I, I believe so. I don't, I, it's, there will be picnic tables, but I don't expect people to be staying there long. I expect them to be coming, picking up their food and leaving. But, and so I don't think that all 24 spaces will be utilized at one time.
All right, I see an existing drive, is that going to have any?
I'm actually going to close the existing drive off and put in a new drive at 24 feet wide so that it'll accommodate coming and going traffic.
Okay.
It looks like you have designed for seven food trucks. Do you know, is, is it going to start as two or three and grow? Do you, do you have seven food trucks that'll start day one? Do you have any feel for that?
That'll probably be it, because I've only got one space spoken for at the moment. I'm going to advertise on Facebook that I'm taking applications as soon as my CUP gets approved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Koger, thank you.
I'm sorry?
I said, "thank you."
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? I'll bring it back to the board then.
Hey, I move to approve the Kogers Corner Food Truck Court, CUP, subject to staff comment.
I'd like to second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, it, approved, is approved for that, okay. The next item on the agenda is the Springdale Public Schools Solar Park Facility, Pre LSD.
The Springdale Public Schools Solar Park Facility, Pre LSD, is located within the northeastern portion of the county. It's accessible from Highway 412 along its south side. The applicant is requesting preliminary large-scale development approval to start construction on a solar battery storage facility. The CUP for this permit was approved by the Planning Board at the August 26, 2021 meeting, and was ratified by the Quorum Court on September 16, 2021. This is the site plan of the proposed solar facility, and again, a copy of the site plan is in your update supplemental packet and also on your desktop. An existing asphalt entrance already exists. The applicant will use this as their entrance. The existing dirt road leads south to the actual facility. There will be a fence around the facility, a gate will be installed. All of the battery storage containers will be on concrete pads, and those will be located towards the front or north of the facility. All of the equipment buildings will be located towards the north part of the facility. The solar panel arrays themselves will take up the rest of the property. The proposed facility exists in an area where there's adequate access to utilities. The fence will be chain link and surround the entire facility. The entrance will be gated with a double swing drive gate. The solar arrays are designed to track the sun as it moves across the sky. Their arrays are quiet and do not generate pollution. Here is an image of what they will look like once installed. To date, there have not been complaints from the public regarding reflection or noise from any of the applicant's other solar facilities in Washington County. Here is the project site, and where the grass is tall is kind of an estimate of where the battery containers will be. And beyond that, kind of towards the tree line, there's a big gigantic field that is where the solar arrays will be. This is from the existing driveway. This is looking west or left along Highway 412. This is looking east or right. Notifications were sent to property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, and to date, staff has not received comments expressing approval or opposition. We've reviewed, reviewed the submitted documents, and we recommend the following conditions. And these conditions have not changed since the time of your staff report, except for one really small thing. It's not an addition, I accidentally added the signage condition in there twice, so I removed one of them. But otherwise, everything is exactly the same. Any questions?
All right, no one has any questions of Seda, we'll open it up to the audience. Anyone here want to speak for or against it, or the applicant here would like to say any words about it? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve the Springdale Public Schools Solar Park Facility Large-Scale Development Request, Preliminary Large-Scale Development Request.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next item on the agenda is the Bethel Elm Preliminary Subdivision.
The proposed Bethel Elm subdivision request is located along the western side of the county, and it is within the City of Farmington's planning area. The subject parcel is located on the southeastern corner of the intersection of Bethel Blacktop, Washington County 62, and Little Elm, Washington County 19. The applicant is proposing a 13-lot subdivision. Lots one through six are accessible from Bethel Blacktop, and the remaining lots are accessible from Little Elm. Lot seven sits right on the corner. I'm not 100% sure if access will be from either Bethel Blacktop or Little Elm. Close-up. So, lots one through six range from 2.65 to 2.67 acres. Lot seven through 13 are each one acre in size. Again, being that the proposed Bethel Elm subdivision is within the City of Farmington's planning area, the final approval of this request will be contingent upon the city's approval. A soil analysis was conducted for each proposed residential lot. Each lot tested favorable for septic system. The design and permitting has been sent to Little Rock for their engineer review by the Department of Health. Final approval of this request, of course, is contingent upon the Department of Health approving the subdivision. Here is the intersection of Little Elm and Bethel Blacktop. The subject parcel is currently vacant. Being that both streets are very straight and relatively flat, staff does not see any issues with flight distance. The property is also in an area where utilities exist. Extending power lines or water lines to service each residential lot should not be an issue. Property owners within 300 feet of the subject parcel were sent notifications detailing the proposal, and to date, we have not received comments for or against. During the technical review portion of this project, there were not items that stood out. Further review will come from the City of Farmington, as again, this is in their planning area, and the subdivision must conform to the city's regulations and designs. The conditions have not changed since the time of your staff reports. However, staff did add some, oh wait, conditions have changed, I'm sorry. Basically, we added some planning conditions, just stating that approval for the subdivision must be attained from the city before the applicant can begin to break ground for development. And the applicant has to address all technical review comments. And Section 11-102, vehicular access from a private drive, basically says that just no driveway shall be constructed in a way that it is necessary to back out onto any cantier public road. So, they have to have some sort of turnaround or be able to turn around in their driveway. And those were the only changes to the conditions. Any questions?
I see on Lot 9, a drainage ditch or channel, I guess. Is that, is that lot dedicated to a pond, or what?
It is...
I see a line that says pond.
It's, um, there's... It says drainage easement Lot 9.
So, that's a non-buildable lot?
It's a non-buildable lot, yes.
Okay, so it's the drainage pond for...
Yes.
Does the entire subdivision drain to that lot, or what?
It does.
It does, okay. Anyone have a question of Seda before we go to the, okay. We'll now go to the audience for their comments.
George DuKane with Bloom Associates. The, the detention pond doesn't drain the entire subdivision, we do release some of it, but the overall number does get reduced, which is, I think, is required.
Okay, where does that drain? It just goes into...
There's a storm pipe that goes underneath the road. And we just line it up. And we just line it up. The reason we picked that lot was because it was where that storm, uh, storm drain was currently at.
Okay. Are there ditches on either side of whatever the name of that Little Elm Road and it dumps into a ditch there or what?
Uh, yeah, I think everything, so there's a pipe at the intersection. I have Little Elm and I think that's Bethel Blacktop. So there's a pipe that captures some of the water and sends it that way. Then there's a pipe right where Lot 9 is at that takes the water, captures the ditches that follow down Little Elm and then pipe all that water into, through that pipe and, and across the street there.
Okay. Will City of Farmington get more excited about this drainage, you think?
They've seen it. They didn't really have any comments on it. It's, we've gone through tech plat with them and they have had no issues, nothing substantial.
Okay. Anybody else have a question as the engineer?
What's your timeline? Where are you in the process with City of Farmington? You said you've gone through tech plat reviews. It have to go to Planning Commission there? What's your, what's your schedule there?
It has to go to Planning Commission, but there's, I mean, the comments that were received, it didn't even require any changes there. You guys actually had more comments to it than the City of Farmington did.
All right, is there anyone else from the audience like to speak to this project? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I move to approve the Bethel Elm Preliminary Subdivision subject to staff comments.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, seeing none. Okay, the next item, if I can find my agenda. Here it is. Is the BlackBerry Ridge Final Subdivision?
All right, so the applicant and developer for the BlackBerry Ridge subdivision is requesting final subdivision approval for the first phase of the BlackBerry Ridge subdivision. The subject parcel is located within the northwestern portion of the county and is within the City of Fayetteville's planning area. The proj, uh, the project received C U P approval at the August 27, 2020 Planning Board Meeting and was ratified by the Quorum Court at the September 17, 2020 Meeting. The project also received its preliminary subdivision approval at the August 27, 2020 Planning Board Meeting. The applicant has developed the eastern portion of their subdivision. Lots 1 through 28 are shown on the site plan. The subdivision was sent to the Health Department Engineering for their review and they approved it. The subdivision is accessed from railroad as indicated here by the red circle on the site plan. And that is what it looks like at the site visit. There are swales that run alongside the roads as indicated by the blue arrow. And here. This is Lot 28, I think. So Lot 28 is a non-residential lot and its sole purpose is for detention. There is a detention pond up there somewhere. And this is the drainage pipe that drains towards railroad into the ditch that's kind of towards the bottom of the screen and along and down railroad, along here on, on the left side of the screen. Detention was also added across the street to help improve conditions. I think in the past, if I remember, there were a lot of comments about drainage. So the applicant has added a lot of drainage. They are here to explain more of that should the planning board members have questions. So this is the cul-de-sac where lots 1 through 5 will be. Again, these are lots all along the street. This is another cul-de-sac. And right there in, on the middle of the screen with the red circle, in between lots 20 and 21 is a trail, an entreeal easement. It's kind of hard to see, but there is clearing there for the trail. Partial sidewalks have been installed. Utility lines have been laid and are awaiting meters and connections. And other utilities haven't been installed, but they are proposed. The subdivision is currently awaiting its final approval from the City of Fayetteville. At this time, staff has reviewed all of the seminal documents and recommends the following conditions approval, of approval, and these have not changed since your staff report. Any questions?
Ceta, you mentioned that it's pending approval, City of Fayetteville, so it's in the Fayetteville growth area, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
We talked about this one once before and this one has quite a few non, non, non-conforming lots. And I'm wondering, again, what the logic is for the continued non-conforming lots.
This does have non-conforming lots, but again, the C U P was approved last year. The applicant is here to answer those questions directly. If you would like to.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Yes, thank you. It's Keith, Keith Tinkleve, developer of BlackBerry Ridge. This is a, a development that I'm building so I can live in. And yes, there are some lots that do not technically conform in reason we had a C U P and that was approved and ratified by the Quorum Court last year. So all that's been approved. When I say not approved, it, it's particularly for, just to refresh everyone, we're talking about lots that, there are 60 lots on 90 acres even all throughout all three phases here. So the average lot size is well within the limits of the intention of the code, but we don't, are donating a large percentage of land or a significant percentage of land to the P O A with the intention that all of us get to go use and not just everybody has their own yard. So there's, I think there's, I'm going off the cuff here, Ceta, but it's around 16 to 18 acres that we're donating to the P O A. That's not on anybody's lot. Does that make sense? So it doesn't count on lot size. So that's where some of the discussions that you're remembering come from and that's why some of that is. But all that's been approved previously and that's all been approved by both this board as well as the Quorum Court.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any question? All right, thanks.
Is this going to be a standard?
Is what going to be a standard, sir?
To not follow the, the-
The recommendation acre-
The one acre minimum?
It's recommend, it is one acre for a residential lot and anything that's unconforming must come through a C U P. And so if there are subdivisions in the future or developments that are under one acre, then they will come before the board if they choose to and they will have to go through this process and also gain approval from the Quorum Courts.
Okay, so the Quorum Court then, they basically overrode or, or the Planning Commission last time, is that what you're telling me?
No, I think we actually-
They approved, the Planning Board approved and so did the Quorum Courts. So it was a double approval.
I was, I was under the impression that it was tabled, but the, I haven't checked the records, so you have, so we'll go with what you got. Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else have any questions of the owner? Okay, bringing it back to the board then. Entertain a motion. Anybody in the audience like to speak? Okay, go ahead.
My name is Nathan Nailings. I live at 2919 Adams Road in Fayetteville. I don't know if my email that I sent to the planners in the packet you guys are looking at, but I think the, the plans for the subdivision were to bring traffic in from the east on Weir Road, which is currently dirt, but it's developed a plan to have, to have pavement. I live on Adams Road and if you put this development, and we're, and my wife and I, we're, we're in support of the development and welcome new neighbors to the area. The, the roads actually look really good up, we've driven up there and it looks really good. But if, right now, if you put that location in a GPS, coming from the south or downtown Fayetteville, it's going to bring you up Adams Road, which is where I live. And there's a, a, a section of road about a mile that is in dire need of improvement. It's very rural agricultural design and it's very narrow, very deep ditches, doesn't have much material. I think the county has talked about doing some improvement, but I haven't seen anything in writing and we just want to make sure there's a, a, a written plan by the road department to make the improvements to widen and really pave Adams Road because this in, along with some other development going along in that road in Weir and the area, is just going to bring a lot of new traffic. It's going to bring significantly more traffic to a road that already needs improvement. So just want to make sure there's a commitment by the road department to, to make those improvements.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board now.
Does staff have any comments regarding anticipated road improvements to Adams Road?
We do not, but we can let the road department know that there is desire to pave Adams Road.
Thank you.
All right, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion for approval of the final subdivision of BlackBerry Ridge per staff, subject to staff comments requirements.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right. I believe that's- The other item has been a tabled, the Blue Springs RV Park, so. Another business? Do we have anything we need to bring up, Ceta?
I, only one thing. We're working on our 2022 calendar and we've asked in the past, as we do every year, does the planning board, do you prefer the way, the way the schedule is now and it's on a kind of like a rotating five to six week cycle? Or would you prefer set days for planning board meetings? In the past, it's been set days and then we switched to this every five to six weeks, you know, a cycle.
The reason we switched to every five weeks because y'all were needing more time for review and so forth and has that worked out?
It, it has worked out, but we thought we'd also ask planning board member input because your schedules also matter.
Yeah, one Thursday's just like the other to me, so whatever, anybody wants.
Thank you.
I, I would say set dates would be beneficial just for work, travel requirements, but certainly understand if staff needs, you know, more time to, to get the, their process together, so.
We'll have examples of both schedules at the next planning board meeting for you to kind of look at and see. I think the new cycle starts, the new planning board cycle starts this Friday, so there's nothing we can do about this one but the ones after. That way we're ready to go either way. And that's all that we had.
That's all we have? All right, so the next meeting is December the 9th, as I see.
Yes, sir.
All right. Anyone have any other items to bring up? Okay, seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, say, stand up. All right, bye.